Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Commission meeting for today. I want to welcome all those joining online, those joining on Facebook and YouTube, and all of you, all of you that are joining us here today in person. We're delighted that you're here. When you walked in today, you could have got a meeting agenda packet. We always encourage you to grab that and follow through with the meeting today. You can also access all of the supporting documents. Find those at sedgwickcounty.org. We encourage you to follow those as well. We've got some wonderful things, wonderful discussions we're going to be having today. Excuse me. So I want to get us right to work. I'll call the meeting to order for Wednesday, October the 15th, 2025. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be led by Pastor Chris Heding, First Evangelical Free Church. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, everyone. Just a brief scripture reading before I open us in prayer. From Acts, Chapter 17, the Apostle Paul says, "The God who made the world and everything in it, being Lord of heaven and earth, does not live in temples made by man, nor is he served by human hands, as though he needed anything, since he himself gives to all mankind life and breath and everything. And he made from one man every nation of mankind, to live on all the face of the earth, having determined allotted periods and the boundaries of their dwelling place, that they should seek God, and perhaps feel their way toward him and find him. Yet he is actually not far from each one of us, for in him we live and move and have our being." Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Almighty God, we praise you because you have made the world and everything in it. You've made us. You've made this, this country and this place in which you've put us to live, and you've made each one of us who serve in it. Lord, thank you for these public servants who have met here today. Lord, I pray that you would bless them, give them wisdom, give each of us wisdom as we go about our vocations that you've given us today. And, Lord, that wisdom comes from knowing that you are Lord of all. And, Lord, you don't need us, and yet you've decided to use us for your good purposes in the world. So, Lord, we thank you for that privilege. Lord, help each one of us today, and especially our leaders who've met here today, to make decisions that would glorify you, that would enable freedom and peace and prosperity and enable people to seek you and to find you. And so we pray that you would be glorified through everything that happens here today. We pray in Jesus's name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Chris, thank you, sir, for being here this morning and offering a blessing. Please give our best to everybody at First Evangelical. Yeah, take care. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
There is Nicole Gibbs.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. First off, we have Chief Deputy Register of Deeds Kinley Ziering here. She's here to talk about the new fraud alert option now available through their office. Ma'am?
Well, hey, Kinley. Good morning.
Good morning. Kinley Ziering, Chief Deputy Registered Deeds. I'm excited to share some great news. Sedgwick County is the first county in Kansas to launch our Notary Fraud Alert. It works just like our Property Fraud Alert service. It's simple, secure, and easy user-friendly. Notaries can sign up online and get instant notifications whenever a document they notarize gets filed in our office. This is a major step forward for protecting the notaries and strengthening trust in our public records. Why does this matter? Notary fraud happens throughout the country through forged signatures, a missed use seals, or unauthorized recordings. It can mean property theft, financial loss, or legal trouble. Notary Fraud Alert will help those notaries stay informed, and so fraud is caught early. The best part is it's live now, and they can sign up for free on our Registered Deeds webpage. And we're proud to lead Kansas in protecting our notaries and the public records.
Kinley, that's great. So again, sign up, sedgwickcounty.org, go to the Registered Deeds office. You can sign up right there.
That's correct. It's super quick.
And we're the first, first in the state to do it.
Yes.
And troublemakers. I love it. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you for taking the lead on this. And just a reminder that, you know, here on the radio, on the other part where you can have your, your property notified.
Yes.
What's that called again?
Um, well, the website is, well, for us, it's called Property Fraud Alert.
Property Fraud. So I kind of smile when I hear these companies want to, you know, call us and we'll.
The Title Lock. Yes.
I just walk in.
Yeah, this is all free.
It's for free. If you, just a reminder to the citizens, you should call your office or go by and do a Property Fraud Alert on your property. It doesn't cost anything, and it's, it's good. So another, so this is just the notaries that we.
Just for the notaries, yes.
But the property stuff is really good, too. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. A lot of great things coming from your office, Kinley. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next up, we have a special visit from Scott Newlin. He's our President and CEO of the Sedgwick County Zoo, and he's here to talk about their recent accreditation.
Hey, Scott. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, brief but exciting announcement from Sedgwick County Zoo. We had our accreditation hearing in Tampa in mid-September, and we are just excited to bring to you all that we are accredited again for the next five years by the Association of Zoos and Aquariums. So exciting news. Sedgwick County Zoo has been accredited from AZA since 1981. So we've had continuous accreditation. Our inspection in 2030 will actually be an even more significant one because if we are successful in that accreditation, we get a second type of notoriety of having consecutive accreditation for 50 years. And that's something that we're really looking forward to and going to make sure that we, we tackle that inspection with the same intensity that we've done over the last 44 years. So just very excited to bring this announcement to you all and, and proud of the work we do at Sedgwick County for all the residents of Sedgwick County.
Yeah, we're proud of it, too, Scott. Can you tell us a little bit about what, what does this mean exactly? How do you become AZA accredited? And what is the benefit of that when the public's thinking about why this matters to the public?
Sure. To be AZA accredited, the process is really a rigorous peer review. So there is a accreditation commission that is made up of about 30 directors, veterinarians, behavioralists like myself, that all volunteer to be on the commission. The commission then trains and deputizes employees from all over AZA to act as accreditation inspectors. So in early May, we had a team of five inspectors come out to Sedgwick County Zoo. They spent a week with us, and they look everything over. They open every door. They flip over every doormat. It is a very robust and rigorous inspection. So getting through an accreditation inspection is a very big deal for a zoo. What it means for the public is AZA is really seen as the gold standard for animal care, animal well-being, and it is kind of a symbol to all of our guests that come through to know that the zoo that they love and support is of the highest standard, and we hold ourselves to very rigorous measures for all of our animal care, animal well-being, and also for guest experience. And that's really what AZA accreditation in a nutshell means.
Well, that's helpful, Scott. We just publicly want to thank you for the stewardship that you provide and your staff provides to what is really a crown jewel here in Sedgwick County and one of the greatest tourist attractions in the entire state of Kansas. So thank you for your stewardship over this. This is a big deal, and we want to celebrate it. Commissioner Bluebaugh?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to, and I think maybe you mentioned this to me before, I just want to make sure. Does the USDA, do they govern, do they enforce that you have to have some kind of accreditation from somebody? Or is this just something that we do to make sure that we're showing the public that we're doing the right things?
Yeah, so we have to be USDA licensed to operate.
Okay.
But USDA does not require us to have any further.
Okay, so we do this above and beyond.
Exactly.
It's not a government requirement.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
That's great. Good clarity. Well, while we got you, I think that we need to know, how are that baby elephants?
Baby elephants are all doing great. All four are just growing like you would expect. If you haven't been out to the zoo in a while, they're all four together now, and we have a lot of just really cool, you know, experiences for guests to see them wrestling and playing around. Juvenile elephants are a lot like human toddlers. When they get them together, there's lots of pushing and shoving and laughing and playing. And so it's quite comical to come out and see the four of them interact with each other. And just like with us, if things get too far out of hand and one of them squeals or barks, all four moms do an about-face and kind of settle the skirmish, and everybody kind of gets sent to their corner, and in about 20 minutes, it starts again. So, but yeah, there's a lot of fun things going on. Tonight, if you don't mind me plugging.
Please, I was going to ask.
Tonight starts our Wild Lights Festival for the season. We run from October 15th through December 21st, and we've got an exciting new array of lanterns this year. It's all new, all different from last year, so we hope everyone will come out and join us for that lantern festival.
Yeah, October 15th through December 21st, Wild Lights.
That's correct.
Let's support. Okay, Scott, thank you. Congratulations again on the accreditation. It's a big deal.
Thank you all.
Okay.
All right. On Tuesday, the Sedgwick County Treasurer opened two new tag office satellite locations, one at the Ruffin Building, which is this one here downtown at 100 North Broadway, and then another at Hayesville City Hall. These additions, along with the existing mega site at Douglas, plus satellites in Derby, West Wichita, and Park City, make it easier for residents to complete their tag and registration services closer to home. A quick note, the main reason tag office visits take longer than expected is missing paperwork. We encourage everyone to double-check the required documents before visiting to help keep things moving smoothly. The Sedgwick County Environmental Resources now has coupons for free mattress disposals available to all residents. The coupon allows citizens to dispose of up to two mattresses or box springs. Coupons we accepted at the Brooks landfill in Wichita. There is a limit of one coupon per residence while supplies last. For more information and to claim your coupon, visit sedgwickcounty.org envirment. And as we are all mostly aware, the 2025 general election is just around the corner. So here's some upcoming dates to remember. Today is the first day that advanced by mail ballots are being sent out. Monday, October 20th, advanced in-person voting begins at the Sedgwick County Election Office. And Thursday, October 30th through Saturday, November 1st, satellite polling locations are open for advanced in-person voting. Last but not least, we are thrilled to announce the groundbreaking of our new Calm Care Crisis Center. You can join us on Monday, October 20th at 9:00 a.m. on the north side of 235 South Topeka as we celebrate this exciting step towards growing and improving mental health services in our community. And that's all I have for today.
Wow, that's it, huh? That's all?
This is a field.
Okay. There's a lot going on here in Sedgwick County. Commissioners, any questions or comments? I would just take an opportunity to again acknowledge what's happening at the tag offices, the consolidation. I know Commissioner Meitzner stopped by there yesterday. I stopped by there yesterday as well. Things were pretty fluid in there. They have a rock star running the information booth and really directing some traffic. So there's six satellites open now. There's two more. She's got two more plans she's working on now.
Correct.
And again, that's driving the traffic so much right now at the tag offices is a few things, but the main thing is the personalized plate renewals. Every five years, so years that end in zero and five, state statute requires that anyone with a personalized plate has to come in and do an in-person renewal. Through all of 2024, there was about 3,200 personalized plate renewals. Through September of this year, it's not 3,200, it's been 17,000 personal plate renewals, and that's just through September with three months still to go. So that's driving a lot of the wait times, a lot of the lines. As we work towards some sweeping reforms at the tag office, that's going to lead the way in trying to reform some of that, but doing a good job in opening satellites and trying to create more access.
Yes.
Thanks for updating the public.
Yes, sir, of course. And also for those that go, I know I saw on social media yesterday they had donuts. Don't know how long that's going to last, but if you decide to go, there might be a sweet treat.
Yeah, please, Mr. Meitzner.
Yeah, I thought it was worth noting, just out of curiosity, they had no, you know, I went by there at, so Monday was, was closed. It was a holiday. So I thought, I'll go by it. And it was about nine o'clock Tuesday morning, thinking this could be, if I believed everything I've been seeing in the media, it's, it's lines and chaos. And the parking lot was pretty full, but there was plenty of spaces to, to park. I went in, there was no line outside. So this was nine o'clock on Tuesday after a holiday, and every window was full. People are moving around. As soon as there's an empty window, they call somebody, and it's filled. And so it just looked like a normal call center or, you know, a customer service type operation. And again, you're right, they had a bunch of donuts right there at the front and, and two or three people greeting them to, what are you, what are you here for? Put them in the right spot. So I think this consolidation into one is, is probably, I actually took a chance to, out of the blue, to visit with, if there was a window empty, I went up to say hi to that clerk as the customers were coming up and, and didn't introduce myself, just asked how they were doing and how long the wait. And they said, oh, it's been great. It's 15 minutes-ish, whatever. So I, I could not see what we've been hearing in the, some of the media posts and some of the other comments on, especially on the social media. So again, that's nine o'clock, but that's the third time I've been by. I did 11:31, you know, noon last week, similar kind of operation, but not near as smooth as the consolidated office. So congratulations to that, to that staff, what they're doing and how hard they're working. And so thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, anything else? Thank you, Nicole.
Always.
Appreciate you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Okay, no one has signed up for Public Agenda, so we'll keep moving. Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Special Meeting Minutes of September 25th, 2025.
Okay, Commissioners, everyone was present for this meeting. Any questions or comments on the meeting minutes? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 25th, 2025. We have a motion, we have a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. I'm going to take up items B and C on appointments. They're connected together as well. Item B is to accept the resignation of Dr. Claire Gregory from the Wichita-Sedgwick County Addiction Intervention Coalition. And just for the benefit of the public, that's the Joint City of Wichita-Sedgwick County Advisory Board that's going to help advise the governing bodies through the utilization of the opioid settlement funds. And item C is a resolution appointing Jennifer Mackey to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Addiction Intervention Coalition. The recommended action could just be taken, which would be to accept the resignation on item B and adopt the resolution on item C.
Okay, Justin, thank you so much. And I'll just thank Dr. Claire Gregory publicly for her work on the Addiction Intervention Coalition, and then welcome Jennifer Mackey to that same coalition. So we're very grateful for people that are willing to serve in any of these advisory board roles, very, very important to this community. And we'll have, at the county clerk's office, do they need to reach out to this individual? Is this in a formal advisory board for?
It is. Chairman, it is a formal advisory board. Do they need to be sworn in? And if they're not here today, then yes, the clerk's office will.
Doesn't seem that Jennifer is here today. So we'll have the clerk's office reach out and schedule a time for Jennifer to come in and sign paperwork and take the oath. Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to take the recommended actions in items B and C. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
New Business. Item D, Update from Wichita State University Campus of Applied Sciences and Technology.
Okay, and really excited about this update. And here she is, Dr. Sherri Utash. Welcome.
Well, well, thank you so much, and good morning to everybody. And thank you for the invitation to be here. On behalf of our almost 800 employees now, I'm really excited to give you just an update of what's going on. As you might know, we are celebrating our 60th year serving Sedgwick County and the city of Wichita. And so I just want to start off with a little bit of a celebratory video, if I could.
65 Wichita Area Vocational Technical School opened its doors with a simple mission, to teach hands-on skills and get people to work. For decades, that mission remained steady. It wasn't yet a college, but it was education, and for countless students, that was enough. But what would it take to make this something more? In 1995, the Kansas Legislature gave the school, then Wichita Area Technical College, the power to grant degrees, and in 2001, full accreditation followed. But then came the real turning point. A new generation rose to the challenge. Educators, innovators, believers, they didn't settle, they disrupted. The National Center for Aviation Training was born, and eight years later, WATC became WSU Tech. With every new program, from healthcare, NIT, to aviation and manufacturing, to niche, home to culinary and hospitality dreams, to the first flight of Wichita's only pilot degree program, WSU Tech became a place where careers take off. Now the future is under construction, not just in buildings, but in big ideas, new spaces, new programs, new ways to learn, connect, and lead. We're not just growing, we're transforming what education looks like, and we're laying the foundation for the next generation. This school is fueled by grit, and we're constantly moving forward. It's a place where talent becomes a trade, where education leads to opportunity, where students don't wait for the future, they build it. The vision is bold, the foundation is strong, the momentum is real. The only thing missing is you. WSU Tech, careers start here.
That's a great video.
So we're happy to celebrate that 60 years, and this is also brand-new news that just came out about a week ago, that we have in a combined enrollment with Wichita State University and WSU Tech of over 25,000 students. And I will just share with you just a personal note that when Dr. Bardo and I were working on the affiliation, he said to me, we're going to get over 25,000 students at some point in time. And at that point in time, I think we might have had combined 16, maybe 16-plus. And I said, you really think so? And he goes, yeah, it'll happen. And I'm really pleased to say that that happened in seven years.
Wow.
So our affiliation started seven years ago this fall, and both of us have really grown through this. So that's, that's a, just a stellar, a stellar number, making us the second-largest institution in the state of Kansas, following behind KU and the KU School of Medicine. So that's a big accomplishment for Wichita, and all that says is that we're continuing to both grow in the work that we do to provide that workforce from the original concept of the affiliation from GED to PhD. But for WSU Tech, this was our largest enrollment in history. This is 11 years of continued enrollment growth, and our student head count is actually over 67, over 7,000 now, so that we, because we continue to enroll all the time, all year long. But there's that day and time with the Board of Regents where the census comes in. So we will serve over 10,000 students this year, probably getting close to 11,000 by the time the year is over. So good news on that front of what we continue to do and how we continue to build that. Just some areas that we're having, you know, tremendous growth in that I think is important for everyone to understand is what we're doing in automotive with both our alternative fuel program and also our service program is up, business welding. Our professional pilot program is booming, and we have an eighth plane coming into Wichita in, on November the 6th, which is the multi-engine plane, so that we will also have the ability to do the commercial end of that program. Culinary is, is up, our AMT, our aviation mechanic program up, and climate and energy control, which is really heating and air conditioning, but we decided to sexy the name up and call it Climate and Energy Control. And it has worked, and it always has a waiting list now. I don't know how that works, but it does. And then we have three new programs that just rolled out this fall, one in electric, electrical technology, mobile equipment, and then our new mental health technician program that we're extremely excited about, all three of those. And all three of those have started off very well. Two things that are just really driving what happens at WSU Tech and are becoming really a lifeline for the growth that we have. One of those is the Kansas Promise Scholarship that is coming out of the state of Kansas. We actually have 426 students that are on the Kansas Promise Scholarship and receiving over $2 million in scholarship funds. And I want to remind everybody how important this is because 66% of our students are first-generation college students. 69% of them are Pell eligible. So they're coming from, a lot of them from economically disadvantaged situations. So the Kansas Promise Scholarship fills in the scholarship dollars that maybe those Pell Grant dollars don't cover. And then they make a commitment to stay in Kansas and work for two years. So this is a great program that the state has put in, and it is, it is really driving, I think, a lot of change in the philosophy of going to college. Then the Future Ready Centers, they continue to really grow, and we have 527 recent high school graduates that we converted into full-time WSU Tech students, which has always been the goal. So that's working. And then we have almost 400 students in our Future Ready Centers. And tomorrow, we're cutting the ribbon on our third Future Ready Center, which is the HAC, the Hub for Advanced Computer Knowledge at WSU South. So our Future Ready Centers, that is Xcel and CTE dollars coming from the state, and then the Kansas Promise dollars are really driving significant change for WSU Tech. This is kind of a report card that we put together, and so I've been using this a lot to talk about things. I think it's important to know that over the past 15 years, we've had 148% increase in enrollment. On the right-hand side of that, you can kind of see the trend line of what's happened in enrollment. But I think most importantly, on the, the left side of this, the student success side, these are the things that we hold ourselves accountable for. Our retention rate, we've worked really hard to build retention. We're right at 80% retention. That is well above the national average. Our course success, 90%. That means students are receiving a C or better in their courses. We talked about FTE enrollment, our graduates, we had our largest graduating class of the history of the college last May, 1,743 graduates. Placement rate, this is super important. 89.1% of our graduates from last year are in this state and primarily in this county working. And then credentials. Applied learning, we do that along with the university, and for us last year, we had over 700 students with over 1,400 experiences earning $4.8 million. So another way of getting a scholarship is to get a J O B while you're in college doing applied learning.
That's correct.
Xcel and CTE, this is kind of another snapshot of that, but you can see we have over 67 high schools that we're working with in the greater Sedgwick County area and south-central Kansas. Certainly, those student head counts are a little over, almost 3,000 at this point in time. So that has just grown tremendously with what we're doing. The head count for this year is 3,600, is just about 3,600. That's for the fall. So we anticipate that number will continue to improve. But we've had great success, but Xcel and CTE, and just think about this, when you think about Xcel and CTE, here's the dream. This is the dream that got started in the beginning, and now it's happening. We have a high school student that starts as a sophomore or a junior in high school. They walk across their high school graduation one day in May. That same week, they walk across our graduation and receive their degree with us, and they are ready. They have the knowledge, the skills, the work ethic, and the job waiting for them. They have the knowledge, the skills, the work ethic, and the job waiting for them. And then they can continue their education once they get into the workforce. Some of them go straight there, but a lot of them are going to the workforce first and then deciding what they want to do next, which is incredible. And they have no student loan debt. So they can go buy a car, they can buy a home, they can be, you know, very economically productive. I'm starting to say that what we're doing with this is creating generational wealth. At the end of the day, I really think that's what we're doing. Kansas Promise, we talked a little bit about that, but just to kind of see the growth of that, again, a state program that has just been extremely important. But you can see the growth factor from 2022 of 160 adult students that took advantage of this, to this fall, we have 727 adult students taking advantage. Again, Future Ready Centers, you can kind of see the growth with that. And just for those that don't, that aren't aware of the Future Ready Centers, that is a partnership that we have with USD 259. And we have one in aviation manufacturing over by North High School. We have one in healthcare at our WSU South location. Opening the one, we just opened the one for IT and cybersecurity at South. And we have another one that we want to build, and that's in the building trades area. And so that's the next one that we're really looking at trying to do. But I think it's important to note, in those centers, look at the, look at the, look at the percent of first-generation students in the healthcare Future Ready Centers, 66% are first-generation. In manufacturing, 49%. So it is really changing the way that we educate, but it's also changing the way that we're creating economic prosperity. Just a list of a lot of the partners that we work with, both within, within the city of Wichita and other ones that are more nationally-based. And we're proud to partner with all of these individuals. It is because of the work that's been done by all of these people and the partnerships that allow us to do the work we do. We say all the time, we're a microcosm of business and industry. So goes business, so goes WSU Tech. This really is just a little bit of an overview of where we're going next. And we are getting ready to build a new building. Well, we are building a new building, I shouldn't say getting ready. But I just have to take a pause here and say, if it wasn't for the, for the, for the courage and the bravery of the Sedgwick County Commissioners that took on the task of building the National Center for Aviation Training, this would not be happening. And if that first 60-year video, note when the change started. The change started 15 years ago when NCAT was opened. That, I mean, that is such a catalyst of what has happened to WSU Tech over the last 15 years. And I just, I, I always say, you know, we have to, we have to really remember those believers, achievers, I call them the Fathers, that put this thing on the map and made it go. So I want to, I want to make sure that we, you know, talk about that. But this new building we're building is an outcome of the growth that we've had. I could remember when we opened NCAT, I would say we could have thrown bowling balls down the hallway and hit no one, and now we are packed. And so this new building is going to give us the opportunity to move forward. And that's, we broke ground on this in August, and we are now building, the building is under construction. This is a, this is kind of the catalyst that started this. We received an ALFOF grant with the Wichita Airport Authority through the city of Wichita, which allowed us to build the infrastructure to connect to Jabar Airport, pour in lots and lots of concrete to make this happen. And so that work is finished, and this is what we're building. And this building will be open January of 2027. It will allow us to grow somewhere between 1,400 and 1,500 new students in, in critical areas. Our pilot program, our, we'll have a high school academy for aviation mechanics. And the robust part of this is all robotics, automation, and the integration of those processes into all types of manufacturing. That could be aviation, that could be ag, that can be medical. So every, you know, as those processes come in place, and that's a huge part of this particular building and the emphasis that we'll play. The thing that I think is important is for everybody in this city and the county to understand that we're on the cutting edge. We're one of the very first to open a building like this in the United States. Now, you are going to see a lot of these open, because there's a lot of people right on our heels that are going to open these kind of facilities, but we're on the cutting edge of this. Biomedical, I know you guys can see the progress being made. When I drove down today and I drove right by it, I was amazed. I mean, we've got walls and glass up four to five floors now. I toured this the other day, and I was on the ninth floor, and my goodness, it is huge, tall, and the ninth floor is way up there.
Yeah.
Way up there. So excited about this, and I, I think everybody that's involved in this really, truly understands how important this is going to be and how transformative this is. But I would also say this is probably one of the most transformative projects that's going to happen probably in our lifetime. I think the things that are going to come out of this are, are going to change the city of Wichita in, in just tremendously positive ways. We have our grand opening tomorrow, I mentioned that. Everybody's invited to WSU Tech at South for the opening of our WSU Tech HAC and our Future Ready Center for Information Technology tomorrow at 2 o'clock. And before I start this, before I start this, I just want to end with this. I want to actually, I mean, thank everybody. We, we do, I get to come up here and talk about this, but I have a tremendous amount of people doing an incredible job. But we could not do the work that we do without the support of Sedgwick County, without the support of the city, without the support of the state of Kansas. It's just critical to the work that we do. And we know that, there was an announcement yesterday, we know that Boeing is going to need new people, we know that we're, we're intricately, intricately involved in developing that pipeline, as we are for every single industry in the city of Wichita. And so it is a, it is a privilege and a responsibility to do the work we do, but we could not achieve the things that happened in this video if it weren't for everybody supporting us.
Good evening. The 60th commencement ceremony of the Wichita State University Campus of Applied Sciences and Technology is now over.
Family, friends, and cherished guests, thank you for joining us on this meaningful and unforgettable night.
Graduates, are you excited?
Tonight, we celebrate the accomplishments of the largest graduating class to date, more than 1,750 students.
I've seen your journey from the classroom to career paths, and now standing here as graduates of one of the finest technical colleges in the nation.
To every graduate here tonight who has ever struggled, sacrificed, or questioned their work, we are more than the statistics we fear. We are proof that it's never too late to rewrite your story.
Family and friends, I present to you the WSU Tech 60th graduating class, the class of 2025.
And if I can leave you with one message, it would be this, the moment you start believing in your own work is the moment your life begins to change.
You will forever remain a Shocker, forever a part of Shocker Nation, WSU Tech community, and Wichita State family. So congratulations, class of 2025.
I implore you to be bold, to be brave, to be kind, and to be relentless. Let your life reflect the purpose, the passion, and the power of the education you've earned. Let it change lives, including your own.
Profound.
I would stand for any questions.
Yes, yes. Dr. Utash, thank you for this presentation and for sharing these videos and all that's going on at WSU Tech. Commissioners, questions or comments? Commissioner Meister.
Thank you, Sherri. Thanks again for being here. And just, we're going to talk a lot of stuff, what you've done and what we've got in the future, but I think it's important, when you talked about the Future Ready Centers and your relationship with 259 and Kelly Bellafell taking the lead, and it's not just for USD 259, they're taking any, any high school student from anywhere that wants, that can get there, can do that. But that roadmap of the, to hear Kelly tell the story, and you've got his words in a way, but about these high school students, they, they never had a chance because they just didn't have the, the tools or the roadmap to, maybe they, they had no idea what they, they could do, and never had a chance to even, to get there. I don't know what, is the tools, anyway. So this Future Ready Center allows a person that was in a family or in a background that never even thought they had a chance to, to do something, to now become certificated and, and like, like he was saying, that, that they do soft skills as well, but like, even a couple of them have gone to Techtron, they have like a 90-day onboarding. But these students are saying, well, we already, we already know this, we don't, we, so now they're, Techtron can do onboarding to these students in a, in a two-week or three-week period. And, and these people, these kids were, hadn't had zero chance of being productive, and now, now they are. And, and they're hitting the ground, and maybe the first in their generation and family to do that. You want to comment to that if I said it halfway correct?
Just as a, just, just to make, just as clarification, all of those high school students are getting dual credit. So also now, the high school, we're, we're helping increase high school graduation rates because these high school students are now doing things they really want to do. And so there's a, there's a, there's so many, there's so many public goods out of what's working in this and how it's working. And then they are, they are ready to, they are ready to go to work at 18 years old. There was, I mean, he mentioned, I think Kelly mentioned the other day, and we've got lots of stories of this, but he mentioned a particular student, 18 years old, buying his first house because he went through this program, and he has a, a job paying 30-plus dollars an hour at 18 years old, buying his first home. That's powerful.
Yeah, incredibly powerful. Commissioner Bluebon.
Thank you, Chairman. You talk about 15 years ago, how everything's changed. It, it has changed big time. You know, 14 years ago, I was on the Goddard School Board, we were starting to expand the pathways, trying to keep kids more engaged, trying to go down the technical avenues. Now, there, there's something for everybody out there. My daughter came to me here a few weeks ago, she is bound to determine that she's going to have an associate's degree in business before she graduates high school. And, and she showed me the price tag on that, and I'm like, this is under $10,000, you know? You, you, there's a huge bubble out there with student loans. And, and, and now we've got programs here where you're talking about kids are graduating that normally wouldn't go to college, and they're going to walk away with no student debt whatsoever. I, I think it's incredible, so thank you for what you're doing.
She can absolutely do that. And then she should apply for the scholarship that WSU Tech and the Barton School of Business have together to go on to the university.
Okay. Good. Very good. Commissioner Meister.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, and thank you for the presentation. It's really kind of exciting to see the videos especially, but, you know, I just came back from a city-to-city tour, I went to Detroit, and one, I was going to share this later during, during other, and I'll, I'll probably get to some more of this, but I do want to share one part of this because I think it's relevant to your discussion today. Detroit has learned through very difficult circumstances how, how to fail as a city, but then how to pick up and, and move forward in a really productive way. And Detroit is not at all what I thought it was. I was completely blown away by what I experienced in Detroit. But there was a gentleman there, I would liken him to be similar to our Jeremy Hill, okay? His name is Ned Stabler. And you don't, I remember that name. I'd like to see Ned Stabler come to Wichita and do some, some, some presentation here at one of our community events. He would be a tremendous speaker choice. He needs to write a book, honestly. The guy is brilliant. But one of the, several things he said, which I thought were really interesting, he talks about how to, how to turn this, he, he's in charge of billions of dollars of economic development capital that he's, that he's in charge of essentially for the city of Detroit. And he actually is a professor at Duane State University is his background. He said that there's three things that really changed the entire community, and really is a refocusing of learning, they learned this the hard way. He's been talking about this for a couple of decades, but he said that, he said, number one, we do economic development wrong. Everybody across the entire country does it wrong. He says, we need to rethink how we do EcoDevo and focus on three things. He, he said, it's not, and I'm having a hard time with this first comment, he says, it's not tax rates as much as you might think it is. It's really about, he said, number one, education. He goes on, talks about risk capital and livability is the next two items. Talking about education, he said that one of the points he wants to, to highlight is that people who have a bachelor's degree, especially go to community college or tech school or whatever it is, and he represents a position at Wayne State University, but we were at Tech Town is the, is the name of the organization we were, we were at when he gave his presentation. Reminded me many, in many ways, reminded me of WSU Tech. But he said that 60% of the students when they graduate with a bachelor's degree, they do in-state tuition, they do community college, they do all kinds of things, they work while they're in school, they end up graduating with a bachelor's degree without debt, 60%. They also own homes, they are the backbone of a community, if you will. The, the key for prosperity starts with education. He said, these are the students that on average, they'll live, they will live 10 years longer and make 1.2 million dollars more than everybody else who doesn't to do that, on average. So they said, the cost of a bachelor's degree there was around $40,000, best investment you'll ever make because you'll make 1.2 million and live 10 years longer. And you're, and, and the issue of prosperity is, is much easier when you have a bachelor's degree. So I know that the, the micros out there and all that, I understand, you know, that we shouldn't necessarily think that they have to have a college degree. And I agree with that to an extent, but he said, even if you have a degree that's unrelated to your career field, it does help you, again, with the 10 years living longer and the 1.2 million dollars additional income over your lifetime. So those truths are overarching, if you will. And I guess I would, I can't, I cannot underestimate the importance of encouraging education. If people want to go to school, we need to find a way for them to get through school. And that's what this is. This is an opportunity for people to reach prosperity for them and their family. And so this is, it is incredibly important to our community to have great schools, and WSU Tech is obviously a huge part of, of this entire discussion. So I walked away with Detroit, from Detroit, very inspired by a lot of their stories, but especially impressed with Ned Stabler. And this discussion actually challenged us on this lot, this lot of economic development, and that education is a, is a key part of true economic development for a, for a community. Thank you so much.
So just two comments, if I may. Number one, every company that we talk to that is considering coming here, one of the very first things that we hear is can you build a talent pipeline? So that speaks to the education part. The other thing is, over the last seven years since we've been affiliated with Wichita State, every single one of our WSU Tech graduates now have a direct pipeline to a baccalaureate degree, and every one of the credits that they receive from us counts towards that baccalaureate degree. We did not have that, that was not the case. It is today. And so that's powerful, because then these young people can go figure out what they want to do, and maybe, maybe like me, when they were 18, 19, 20 years old, they didn't know what they were going to do. So then that pathway becomes, you know, more important for their education.
I can tell you that I joined the military primarily because of education, and it changed my life. And the unfortunate thing was, when I, when I was able to get out of the military, finally, I wasn't quite done. And I waited for a few years to get back to school. So I was an adult learner, and I didn't graduate with my, with my first bachelor's until, I think I was about, maybe almost 30 years old. And so that was unfortunate for me that I, I waited that long. But the reality is, there's a lot of people like me who struggle with finding, finding a way to get to college. And WSU Tech provides an opportunity for you to get started, to, to make money and earn money while you fill out your resume and continue to go through, through school. Eventually, you'll get there. There's a lot of folks out there that struggle with, with how to, how to, how to attain these levels of education that really changes their life forever. And WSU Tech is not just for adult learners, it's for everybody, it's for, it's for high school students too, it's for everyone.
It is.
But it's a, it is a path to a career that will change their life. And so again, I, I just want to say thank you for your, for your leadership of WSU Tech and, and for the partnership with WSU. I think this has been a tremendous experience for this community. Yeah, I can't say enough good things about what you do. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Dr. Utash, from the current programming to NCAT, the expansion, Kansas Promise and all that's doing here, I echo what everyone's saying, we're just deeply grateful for all the work that you're doing and your staff and all these students, everything that's happening, the energy around Wichita State, but Wichita State, WSU Tech in particular is, it's felt. And you are right, when we sat in on these economic development meetings and we are recruiting and... and we are recruiting and talking with organizations and companies from across the globe to come here, the question they have is, can you develop the workforce pipeline? And we always call you and line you up and bring you in. And you're the closer, the Mariano Rivera, coming in and closing the deal for some of these things. But I want to, while I've got you, every opportunity I get, I want to talk about future ready schools. Because I really do believe that as you look at what USD 259, 82% of the kids that attend USD 259 come from families that live under the poverty level. In my view, what you're, and Kelly Bluffeld and 259, what you guys are doing is the greatest ticket to reversing this dangerous trajectory of generational poverty in this community that is growing. This is the biggest thing that I think that we should be investing into. This is the, the footprint that we can grow. So, I, one last plug, if you could. Why does this matter? Why the future, all the things that are happening at WSU Tech, we're doubling down on. But this one piece here, the Future Ready Centers, why is this such a big deal for this community and our future?
So, I do think that it changes generational poverty into wealth. And I do think that's extremely important. And I think it helps address so many of the bigger issues, social issues that we have. If education is the great equalizer, and if we can get young people into these Future Ready Centers and get them prepared and give them the knowledge, the skills, the work ethic, and the self-efficacy they need to be able to go to work and to start their careers earlier, that changes a lot of things. It changes our, our, you know, unhoused issues. It changes our issues of mental health. It changes so many of our social issues that I believe education can fix. And, and the thing that I want to say is, this is not the last part of their education. For some, it may be, but for many, it's just the beginning. But it's beginning it at a period of time that is so critical. And if that student can go across those two stages in one week, of which maybe some of them would have never even graduated from high school had they not had this opportunity.
Yep.
If they can go across there and get those two, those two degrees, the certifications, the industry credentials they need, and they have guaranteed interviews with employers as well, many of them, the majority of them, are going to be walking across knowing where they're going the next week to work.
Yes, that's exactly right. Well, some of these individuals, some of these kids, they become the highest earners in their family, literally right after they're graduating from high school because of this. I spoke about Future Ready Centers everywhere I go. I talk about these things, as you know. And two people from Techtron, one of them being Ron Draper, pulled me aside afterwards and says, keep talking about this. We will hire every single one of these kids that come from the advanced manufacturing Future Ready Center. We will hire them all. And when you have Techtron saying that, we'll take them. We want them. We need them. We'll take them. And obviously Boeing and Spirit and Boeing are going to have the same, Sam Sackett, Spirit's government affairs person, says, please double down here. We need this. This is the pipeline that we need. So.
And healthcare is another one. I mean, it starts the pathway for healthcare. So for many of those students that are going to go on for a four-year degree, think of the savings that they're getting and how much quicker they're going to be able to work in the hospitals and
Graduating debt-free.
And our, and our assisted living centers and all those places.
Well, I'm going to keep yelling from the rooftops what I believe about this program and what it could do for this entire community and generations of people. So.
Thank you.
Bless you. We're appreciative of you. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. Just one more thing. On this trip, I also learned about the term Alice, and maybe you guys know what that means. It's one of those things where, for some reason, I've missed this discussion. But I learned about it on this trip, and I'll read, I'll just read this, part of the slide says, "Economic development goals is raising prosperity for all. The primary objective is raise median income household, raise median household incomes and reduce percentage of households living below the Alice threshold in Kansas." This is a stated goal. And to do that, the core objectives, there's actually four of these, but I'll only lead, I'll read two. It says, again, "Increase median household income across all communities and reduce the number of households below the Alice threshold." Alice meaning asset limited, income constrained, and employed. So someone who basically has a little hope of getting, climbing, climbing up that ladder, they just have a little bit of difficulty figuring out how to, how to do better in life. They're employed, but they're not, they're not making enough money to do, to pay for, if you will, basic necessities of life like housing, childcare, food, transportation, technology, and healthcare. So, education, again, if someone is in this Alice threshold, trying to find a way for them to access education is the way for them to earn more money. To climb, to climb up out of that threshold. This is, again, I think, one of our greatest opportunities in this community. So I know that you have great numbers today. I hope they increase.
They will.
I think, I think that John Bardo would be very pleased, right? John Bardo would be very pleased.
Yes, he would be. I, I really took a moment and thought, and talked to Dr. Bardo the other day when the 25,000 came out.
Well, we talked about how to, how to lift up this community and how to encourage people to do better and to climb out of poverty. This is, this is a key.
It is.
And we, being able to access educational opportunities. I would just stress, you know, when, when kids are in, in public schools and high school, is their very best opportunity not to miss that greatest opportunity. But if they did miss it for some reason, to get back at it. Because there are, there are always opportunities to do better. And I think we need to just, again, connect the dots for people. And I think that's one of our jobs here is to, is to find a way for people to get back at it.
Sure.
Because ultimately, education is how to get the poverty solution fixed. Thank you.
We do a lot of upskilling and reskilling of adult students. So, average age is about 26 for us in our adult market. So, all are welcome.
Mr. Meitzner, finish the touch on it.
Yeah, well, I'll let you put the closing comments with, with Dr. Utesh. But Sherry Scott is in our, he's head of our IT. He's in the audience here. And I'd like to invite him to, if he wants to come to the ribbon-cutting or the, tomorrow, at the, it's the old mall, the Wichita Mall. Basically, WSU Tech's taken over it, but it's
Caliber.
Is it? Yeah. I think you'd enjoy having a relationship. The cybersecurity, we're just getting started at that, and IT, and I think it'd be good. So I'm glad to, and if you can be there, I think you'd enjoy seeing that. He's got, he runs a pretty good cybersecurity. I think when we had our problem at WSU Tech, you leaned on, we leaned on Cedric County IT to help that. And Wichita did too. So, maybe there's some bridge building there that you guys can enjoy mutually. But then I'll let you wrap it up. So, thank you for being here.
Dr. Utesh, we're incredibly grateful, but we're also very proud. So, it's fun watching you guys win. Keep stacking those wins because when you win, the entire community wins. So, God bless you guys.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right, yeah. Okay, with that being said, I'll make a motion to receive and file. A motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaum?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Tom Stoltz.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items E through double-letter AF this morning.
Okay, got quite a extensive consent agenda. We've all been briefed and talked through it. I am going to ask to pull item M. I'm very much supportive of item M, but I'd like to discuss it publicly so the community's aware of what is tailed into item M. So, without objections, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items E through AF, with the exception of item M. And we'll come back to that.
Second.
We have a motion? We have a second? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaum?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Okay, Tom, item M, would you mind letting everybody know what this is?
Item M, Chairman, is consideration of a First Amendment certified community behavioral health, which we call CCBAC. And it's an agreement with an entity called Pixus. And Chantel Westbrook is here today from Calm Care to give an overview to the commission of what Pixus does for us. We tried, the person at Pixus really wanted to be here, but they had a conflict. So Chantel can cover this with commission. So, be pleased, Chantel.
Please, yeah. Chantel, thanks for coming.
Yes.
Appreciate you.
Absolutely. Chantel Westbrook, Clinical and Rehab Director for Calm Care, and glad to talk a little bit about what Pixus has done for us for, really, over 25-years. So, they went by the name of Behavioral Link, and then it changed to Pixus. So just in case you're familiar more with, with Behavioral Link. But they provide a lot of our additional services. So when someone comes into services, they, we do an intake. We get them kind of set up with what, all things that they might need. And we're going to still provide the case management for them. But Pixus assists us with a lot of other services, so we can kind of wrap those youth up in more services. So for example, groups after school, one-on-one skill-building, respite services, transitional age-type services, those that are 16, 17, that need to really learn more life skills, more independent living skills. They work with a lot of foster youth that definitely need some assistance with that. And some of the things that they do, for example, would be after school. So, running groups after school that are geared around skill-building. It might be how to manage social relationships, how to manage anger, how to just kind of get along better, reduce depression, reduce anxiety, anything that's kind of that skill-building around mental health and kind of integrating into their, their, hopefully, their normal life and school. So, could be after school, could be during school. If they need additional support during school, we could have Pixus do those services for us. So, they really act as an extension of our services, and we're able to, to really provide more and give that youth more opportunity. A lot of these youth are really at risk. They may be at risk for being in juvenile correctional-type programs. They might be at risk for substance use, might be at risk for going into foster care. So, a lot of the goals that we're trying to do are to reduce those needs for any higher levels of care and to keep them more, more stabilized and able to live in their community. We want them to, you know, be in their kind of least restrictive environment. If they're in a foster home, we want them to be successful there. And so really, Pixus has, for a lot of years, helped us to achieve those goals. We hold them to various outcomes and the same type of standards that we, we do as well. And so, with them being a part of our partnerships, we're able to do a little bit more for, for youth. And again, a lot of these at-risk.
Yeah.
I also appreciate, they, they do a lot of outreach to parents, a lot of transportation. That's a barrier. And so they will really work to remove those barriers, and that's what we want. Because obviously, if kids are more connected in services, they're going to be able to get better and, and do better as they move forward.
Well, Chantel, thank you so much. This was really important for the community to understand what's happening here. Calm Care really has two main partners that we work with, obviously, Mental Health America, but also Pixus.
Yes.
And we wanted people to understand exactly what it is that Pixus does. Commissioner Meitzner and I were down. We met with some juvenile judges last week. And Judge Jackie Kelly made a comment. She's new to the bench in her first year as a juvenile judge. And she made a comment that about 65% of her caseload, these juveniles have some sort of either a mental health disorder, you know, health challenges, or a substance abuse disorder, addiction. And so, Pete and I started talking about, man, how do we get upstream to head these off before they get into corrections, before they get into the, the juvenile justice system? And so I, I wanted to highlight this. This is actually, we are trying to strengthen this relationship with Pixus. I know Mike Creewell, the president, and Adon, who does a lot of the outreach here. I know them from the foster care community. They take a special interest in those that are having, those particularly foster kids that are having behavioral challenges. Many of these kids that are bouncing, that they won't stay at one home, and they're going, these are the kids we read about that are sleeping many times in offices. Because a foster parent can't keep this child because of behavioral challenges in a home, Pixus steps in many times, and they take care of these kids. And Wichita Police has a direct connect to Pixus. I know you through Calm Care. Obviously, we have a deep relationship. I know Amber Hope calls Pixus frequently with kids that have behavioral challenges. This is one of those organizations in this community that I think we need to celebrate, we need to lift up. And our partnership with them, strengthening this partnership is going to have a lot of fruit, a lot of fruit. So, thank you to Calm Care for working with them. Thank you for strengthening this partnership and the support with them. So, and thank you for letting us know exactly all that they're doing and why we, why we wanted to celebrate this work.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions? Or Commissioner Meitzner?
I just echo that, the comments, to learning and thinking that 65% of these kids in juvenile corrections, you know, are going to court. And to think that they've already got mental health and experience in mental health and substance abuse challenges, it's just so scary to know that, I mean, the judges are troubled with it. And knowing that they'll soon be 18, and they'll just be part of that adult environment. So, I think us getting, attacking this at a young age with companies like Pixus and whatever else you guys are doing is very critical. It's almost similar to what we just talked about with Sherry Utesh, and getting skilled workforce at the young age. And so.
Yes, it makes a huge difference getting them into services as early as possible and wrapping them up in as many services, keeping them connected, staying in touch with guardians.
That's great.
Eye-opening for, for me, and thank you. I'm really glad that you pulled this so we could have, have you here to talk about that. So, thank you.
Yeah. Chantel, thank you for coming. This is really important. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to make a motion to approve item M on the consent agenda. We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaum?
Aye.
Commissioner Wise?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Okay, we are not having legislative issues. We're actually going to have our lobbyist team. The Watkins team will be with us at staff meeting next week, I believe.
Yes, sir.
To go through in more detail and really kind of refine our legislative agenda. Okay? Next item.
Federal grants discussion.
Okay, we do want to have a federal grants discussion. And we've invited Deputy County Manager Tim Kaufman to come and talk about the WIC program and some of the developments that we need to be aware of. Tim, welcome, bud.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Tim Kaufman, Deputy County Manager. We've talked a little bit about the WIC program and the funding concerns. As the federal shutdown occurred, it was at the end of a fiscal year, beginning of fiscal year. And WIC is a reimbursement-based program, so there just not a lot of funding available. So, through our work with KDads, and KDads is the, the state partner that receives those federal funds, and then they flow through to local health departments to provide nutrition services to, to infants, children, and mothers. That funding, they've identified enough to get us through about the end of October. And at that point in time, if the shutdown isn't resolved by then, there are real concerns that there won't be funding available for the staff that operate the program. And that's the kind of money that we see in the county budget is, the funding for those staff. And then also the nutritional services. So, WIC program participants receive funding to be able to go to the grocery store and buy nutritional food for their, those children. One of the big things that they can purchase with that card is formula for babies, for infants. And there aren't a lot of other options in the community. There are certainly none to the scale that we provide services through the WIC program here in Cedric County. And so, we have, staff have worked very hard to come up with potential solutions in the event that this federal shutdown isn't resolved before the end of the month. We may come talk to you about additional resources, or we're continuing to talk to the state to see if there are additional resources at the state level that would allow us to replicate some kind of program that would allow for those nutritional services continue to be available. We're talking to other partners in the community. There are lots of different folks that are interested in making sure that moms and kids are fed. There just aren't capacity with any of those other programs to take on the burden that it would be if there is no federal funding for this program. And so, we'll keep you apprised as we go. Again, there's a lot of willing partners, people that are interested in this space, but they just do it on a really small scale. And the WIC program is a really significant, large program. We've talked about, serves about 9,400 folks in any given month. And so it's an expensive program, but it's a really critical program for those program participants.
Okay, that's a very timely update. We appreciate this. So, through the end of October, it's kind of the loose deadline for us, right? Federal government stays shut down through the end of October. We've got a bit of a brewing crisis on our hands in regards to making sure that many of these individuals, particularly in the nutrition program, can access the, the resources, particularly the formula that they need. I would agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Howe when we talked last week, that the best conduit of this program is the state because of the resources from the state. So I So I appreciate that you're working with them to see if we can try to continue a program of some sort as we patchwork this thing together to make sure that these individuals get the resources that they depend on. If for some reason the state isn't able to stand up a program, to continue a program of sorts, obviously that we, you know, we're going to have to step into action. So I'm assured that there's some options that are being developed right now that you can brief us on at that point?
Yes.
Just keep our fingers crossed that maybe we don't get to that point. But I'm assured that the County Commission, Cedric County, is going to do everything we can to make sure that the people that need us will get the resources they need.
Thank you for that support.
Okay, appreciate that. Easiest way to solve that is just open up the federal government again, I guess, huh? Okay, thanks, Tim. Okay, any questions or comments on that? Okay, next item, please.
Committee reports.
Okay, Commissioners, any committee reports that you'd like to share with the public? Okay, saying none? Next item?
Other.
Okay, anything under other? Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of things. I have a Citizens Town Hall this evening at 6:30 at the Derby Public Library on Walnut Street. I forgot the exact address. But anyway, it's on Walnut Street and Derby. You'll find it, 6:30 to 8 o'clock PM tonight, the Citizens Town Hall. I just wanted to also reflect a little bit on the city-to-city tour, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman. Just go a couple more minutes?
Sure.
Okay. You know, it's interesting to look at Detroit as to, they grew incredibly fast. They had a population surge, if you will, that just is mind-blowing. In fact, they overbuilt homes by about 50,000 homes in anticipation for additional growth. But things changed for the city of Detroit, and they had an exodus that was probably just as great and fast as their surges. And so they ended up with about 50,000 too many homes. And consequently, the land bank that's there today, they actually have 60,000 properties that are for sale in the city of Detroit or the suburbs around Detroit. That is an incredible number. They are trying to work through that. There's all kinds of programs they have that are trying to encourage people to purchase those properties and rehab them. Some of that's done through different nonprofits that are doing a lot of that. They're rehabbing homes that are very fast-paced, but even at that rate, it's still going to take decades to fix the problem that they have created. One of the questions is, what actually happened to Detroit? What, I mean, what caused this to happen? And one of the first speakers we had there was the president and CEO of Mitch Otto, I guess it's called, Mitch Otto, his name is Glenn Stevens. And they're very, they're very willing to admit their mistakes that they made. And I thought that was very humble to kind of admit what went wrong in Detroit. Basically, there was an unwillingness to change. As the automotive industry was changing around them, they did not want to change. And I think that a lot of the companies that create automotive cars and stuff, they found other places to go and other places to do their work. So it was almost, it was almost self-imposed, the fact that they were not willing to change. They learned that. They use the word inflection point today to describe the willingness to change. And they have, again, great data today to show that things are actually, things are certainly going better. Couple of the slides that they put up, I wanted to just read these quotes. And there's a couple of books I would like to encourage us to consider reading. Again, I think that since we have an aviation industry here, I think there's a lot to learn from Detroit, because again, they have 25 original equipment manufacturers in the city of Detroit or the neighboring community. It is a epicenter, if you will, of automotive manufacturing. And so I'd say we're the epicenter of aviation manufacturing, so there's a lot to learn there. These two quotes, let me just read this one. It says, "The person who is the star of previous era is often the last one to adapt to change, last one to yield to logic of a strategic inflection point and tends to fall harder than most." That's a quote by Andrew Grove, who's the author of a book called Only the Paranoid Survive. I plan on getting this book, and I'd like to read that. I think that this, again, is encouraging us to be willing to find that inflection point and change when necessary. Don't miss your opportunity. You might not want to pay the cost that Detroit has experienced, if you will. The second quote is this, same author, it's called, it is the same book, I'm sorry, I thought it was two books. It's the same book. It says, "If you are wrong, you will die. But most companies don't die because they are wrong. Most die because they don't commit themselves. They fritter away their valuable resources while attempting to make a decision. The greatest danger is in standing still." So once again, the name of that book is called Only the Paranoid Survive. So I'd like to maybe encourage us to consider reading that book. A couple of other things about the trip. This is my third city-to-city tour in my 11 years on the Commission. This one, I think I learned maybe the most out of all the trips I've been on. We had about 60 attendees. There was four city council members and one mayor that attended, along with about 45 other, 50 other community leaders, all types of community leaders around here, that the networking was tremendous, being able to talk about their businesses and their initiatives, as well as talk about the county. So we were able to exchange a lot of information on this trip. That's always valuable. Couple of the other things we did was we did walk around downtown quite a lot. There's at least two places where we were dropped off downtown, spent several hours exploring. And one of the things I thought was fascinating was this, this is a, one of the places, the last place we visited was called Campus Meritus Park. It's been named the number-one public square in the US by US Day Today, has won countless awards for public space, design management, operations, placemaking, and programming. This is an area that, again, I would assume the downtown Detroit, what would you expect to see down there? Well, I'm in downtown Wichita, and I know what I see downtown Wichita, but this is completely different. I would tell you that there are just, it seems like thousands of retail shops. There's flowers, and there's walking opportunities all over the wide sidewalks and the green spaces. But what was interesting to me was there was, I didn't see a single homeless person. There was no one camped out anywhere. There was no panhandling. There was no gang tags. There was no litter. It was one of the cleanest areas, bustling with people, full of activity, and everyone felt safe. And interestingly enough, I never even saw a police officer. It's almost like it was a different universe. It was just really odd to see that much activity in an area that basically had really, almost, it would be a place you would want to go on vacation. I'll just say that. It was a tremendous experience to be down there. But that's not all. We went to another place called Midtown Detroit. And there we went into the neighborhoods and talked to people at shops and saw some of the things they do with abandoned homes and the programs they have that rehabs these homes. That was also a tremendous experience. They actually have retail businesses intermingled, if you will, into the neighborhoods. You can go down the street where there's houses, there's a donut shop right there, or whatever. So that was, I thought was tremendously interesting. They do have a, one of the places we stopped was a bioscience facility, which I, again, I know that we're building our bioscience facility here, so I compare us with them. Theirs was enormous and had a lot of stuff going on there that was leading edge, if you will. They also had their thing called New Lab. It's a very large, old train station that they've turned into a really beautiful building. It's called New Lab. And I would say this is kind of like our nextest organization, where people bring entrepreneurs in, and they're demonstrating all kinds of ways to be innovative and business startups. The stories we heard out of there were just tremendous. And so overall, being able to experience those speakers and see what they're doing in Detroit was definitely worth my time. They're doing, again, the city, again, filed Chapter Nine bankruptcy just 12 short years ago. They are not, they've not solved all the problems. They still have tremendous money problems. They still have a resurgence, a resurgence challenge with many, many abandoned properties. But I came back with ideas on how to do things differently. I think my perspective on what's important maybe has changed a little bit, and they are climbing out of a tremendous dark time in their city's history. But overall, I was very impressed. It was a great community. The leadership in that city were quite amazing, actually. And I think politically speaking, I'm sure we're probably not on the same side of the spectrum, but they're doing some great things down there. And I have to say that they really did impress me with their leadership. Interestingly enough, Wayne County, Wayne County is like, I think, 1.7 million people in Wayne County. The three-county region has 151 municipalities. Now, think about that for a minute. 151 municipalities in the three-county area. The County Commission is 15 members for Wayne County. So a lot going on there and a lot to learn. But anyway, great experience, and thank you for the chance for me to be there last Wednesday. I'm sorry I missed the local consult, but I was busy doing this. Brought back a lot of great ideas. I have some crazy ideas now for affordable housing, so hang on to your hat for later. I appreciate you guys' grace, let me go to that trip so much. Really was great for me, and I'll continue sharing as I have opportunity. Thank you, Chairman.
Well, Commissioner, we're glad you were able to go. Appreciate you representing the Commission on that trip. Anything else under other? I would just acknowledge, and I think it's important to acknowledge, we've been talking a lot about the Kansas Partner Corrections, the potential new funding formula that might be passed down and the impact it's going to have on Cedric County. Obviously, we've gotten very public, very loud, and very critical of that funding formula. We sent a letter to everyone under the sun stating our objectives and asking for some reprieve. I just want to thank publicly, on Monday, October 27, KDOC Secretary, Kansas Partner Corrections Secretary Jeff Smuda and his team are going to come here to Cedric County and meet with us to have a conversation. And they sent a wonderful reply back and said, "We're open to ideas. We certainly want to talk." And I just, I've been very critical of Kansas Partner Corrections publicly, and I just want to acknowledge that the secretary did reach out directly, and he wants to come down and bring a team and really visit through this. It was very sincere, and we're really encouraged and really hopeful. He certainly understands the impact it's going to have on Cedric County and was very open to exploring ideas. So publicly, I just want to thank the secretary and really looking forward to visiting with him and his team on the 27th. Okay, anything else under other? Okay, you let us finish up a little early today, huh? Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive session.
And we have none. Praise God.